We'll call our meeting to order this morning. Good morning. Looking for an approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Haney and a second by Commissioner Wayland. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Citizens to be heard. Is there anyone wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Haney. Any further discussion? Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. We have the minutes from November 6th. Looking for an approval?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Haney for approval, a second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The minutes are passed. Okay, our item number two is a presentation on the Seal Coat Program. Steve Moore from Morehead Public Works. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for coming today.
Thanks for your time. This won't take long, but I just kinda wanted to say thanks again for your continued support for our paving program with the wheelage tax. We couldn't do the work that we do without that money. So first and foremost, we appreciate that continued support. And I just kinda wanted to give you a rundown on what we did and how things are going. So. Apparently. Not sure. Always it comes down to come. I'm not sure what's...
We do have your packet as well.
Okay. Really, I'll talk a little bit about our goals and objectives. You know, we had some strategic planning that we did over the past year and I kinda tie that in with what we're doing here. Talk a little bit about our budget and some of our priorities. I'm not gonna go into great detail of what we did, but your packet includes some details of the work that we were able to do. So under, for strategic planning, we have strategic initiatives and under infrastructure, we have a goal to provide safe and well maintained and sustainable transportation systems with an objective of keeping, of achieving an AD pavement condition index through our five, over our 500 lane miles of road pavement. That was kind of, we came with that 80 number. Engineering did analysis on what it would take for, to optimize lifecycle costs for our street system. And so we could spend less money at the, you know, along the, doing maintenance or milling overlays, but over time, our streets would continue to degrade and then over 20 years, we would be doing more expensive repairs. So that's kinda how we came up with the AD PCI. And on the next slide, there's a pie chart. In order to achieve that ADPCI, we determined that we would need to spend about $8 million annually in our street systems in Morehead. And that's just existing pavement, so that doesn't take into account any new street systems for expansion or growth in the city. And my portion of that pie is that half a million dollars, which has increased significantly over the last four and a half years. And part of that is because of the wheelage tax that we receive, about $80,000 a year.
Excuse me, Steve. Did you say you had 500 miles of...
500 lane miles.
Lane miles.
Yeah.
Fifty, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Thank you.
And under that objective, every year, I develop an annual pavement maintenance plan by May, and we work with engineering to coordinate and see what they have in their five-year SIP. And we look for good candidates. This year, we targeted 458,000 square yards of pavement. That's about 65 lane miles. That's three times our normal production rate. So it was pretty aggressive. And so, and we also plan some strategic milling overlay, specifically in some of our north Morehead areas that are, have some pretty degraded streets. And then our goal was to expend 85% of that budget by the third quarter, 'cause then we get into the non-paving weather, so. And I need to hold some in reserve, cash in reserve, to buy pothole material and those kinds of things. So we expended 88% of our half a million dollar budget by the third quarter, so we met our goal. The next slide is just a map of some of our strategic milling overlay that we did. So you can see there were several areas in north of, in north Morehead, and some of those areas, we did some work on Oakway, for example, to prepare for that underpass project, since that's a major detour. We were not able to get to 7th Avenue South because I just ran out of time and money, so we programmed that into our 19 program. The next slide is just an example of the condition of a lot of our streets in north Morehead. It is about less than two inches of asphalt. It's surprising that they hold up. They're old, old streets. Yeah, but, but now they're getting to the point where when we plow, we take off asphalt with it. So in the spring, we're struggling to make repairs, and then it's beyond normal pothole repair. And our plan is just to continue to let it degrade until we can do a rehab project, but it's hard to tell customers that you gotta wait 10 years and you gotta deal with this. So we're gonna, we try to do some of those larger projects in-house. The next couple of slides are just some examples of the condition. And this was after, slide number eight is after we milled that area, and there's just nothing we can do to patch that. And so on slide 10, you can see we just did a curb-to-curb overlay in-house. So my guys are getting really good at paving. They're doing some nice work out there, and it's helping augment our paving program that Bob Zimmerman has, our five-year SIP. So...
Is the base on those? How do you find the base on those?
Well, those base, the base on some of those north streets are, it's after you mill an inch and a half, you get to it, and it's not really base. It's just, it's not really base. But, but it's amazing, because I think they're previous gravel roads. So they're, they're serving decently, but it's not a, you know, your standard six inches of base and what you're really, and then, you know, two to four inch overlay. So it makes repairs challenging. So we're gonna see how these hold out, and we're hoping to get a good 10 years out of it until we can get some more rehab dollars to do the, do the major street repairs.
Steve, when you, when you do that, I know, I remember years ago, living in, in north Fargo, they, they went through some of this, but they, they, they did the whole underground. They had to redo all the underground. What's the condition of the underground in, in some of these areas?
Oh, as far as storm drains, storm systems?
Yeah, sewer.
Storm sewer. We don't see, I'm not seeing a lot of movement. There's some, but we see more issues with underground in the south areas that were done a lot later.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, it is very interesting.
I was thinking back in, would these areas, would they have the old style of clay sanitary sewers?
You know, I, I would assume so, but I don't know, as Bob takes care of the sanitary, so I don't have a whole lot of detailed knowledge of, of those. But, yeah, we don't see a lot of underground movement when, you know, some of those areas in, in the older south part of Morehead, you can tell exactly where a storm drain line is crossing the road.
Well, these pictures look very familiar from my walking around.
Yes, yes. So, so we're trying to prioritize. The frustrating part is I can't do it, we can't do it up everything. So we try to do some areas that really need it. That area with those pictures, we're just south of Robert Asp, so there's lots of, you know, bus traffic and, and so that was, we just didn't know what else to do, so we took it curb-to-curb and hopefully we'll, we'll get another 10 years out of it. So the next slide there is, you know, just restates our goal and objective, and now we're onto the seal coat portion. So our seal coat equipment was about 30 years old, so I've had it programmed for a couple of years. So we bought a new tack oil distributor truck and a new chip sealer, 'cause I wasn't gonna be able to produce 458,000 square yards of seal coat with the equipment that we had. So first thing is we teed up new equipment. And then the next slide is my, I did some research. Now, I, I updated the slide, so it's unfortunate that it's not coming up, because I actually went back 20 years and looked at our actual financial data. So the, the green line on this chart in your packet is actually just assumed a straight line from the last data point in 2014, and I just took 3% depreciation back to 1998. But what, what the real data shows is if you look between 2002 and 2005, and then 2009 to 2013, that budget line actually is flat. So we had the, we had a flat line materials maintenance budget. And that green line is how much money I had for, that we got for materials maintenance, asphalt, tack oil, P rock, gravel.
That's 'cause all your money went to fighting floods?
Yes, yes, exactly. And yes, in all fairness, my other priorities. And actually, in 1998, the, the material budget was actually like $86,000, so that line actually is way, way below. But the interesting, yeah, other priorities, floods. So in the 17-year period, we seal coated 1.5 million square yards. Starting in 2015, over the last 40 years, we've done over almost 2 million, so. But part of that, as you see, that jump in the green line and the budget line from 2014 to 2015 is thanks to you. That's the, that's the year I, I got my first year of wheelage tax. So, I mean, that's a significant bump, to go from 220,000 to 300,000. So, and then, and then it flatlined for a couple of years, and then I went to the council and asked for 175,000 more, and they, they supported that, as streets and our transportation systems are a top priority in Morehead. The next couple of slides are just what we did. I won't bore you with the details, but we targeted 450,000 square yards. Our goal was to get to 90% of that, and we did 93%, and finished at 420,000. So my guys worked really hard. I'm really proud of the work they did. One of our biggest lessons learned from seal coating, though, is awesome that we did three times the normal amount, but we could not sweep enough. So we had P rock everywhere, and so we got a lot of complaints, and they were all valid complaints from our constituents. We just could not get it swept up fast enough. So we're gonna have to evaluate whether we need to dial back so I can deliver a better product and get rid of that P rock, or maybe we contract out some street sweeping. But I hate to do that, 'cause I have good assets to do that. It's just, when we seal coat, it's everybody that I have to seal coating, so I don't have anybody to sweep. So it takes time. And that's hard, and that's understandable. If it was my road, I'd be the same, I'd do the same way. I'd say, hey, my kids are gonna slip on this, on their bikes.
How long after you seal coat, do you sweep?
We, we're using a tack oil that, that sets a lot faster, so we can basically go in the next, after a couple of days.
Really?
So we don't have to wait a couple of weeks anymore. But we did, I mean, and we did do, we got to First Avenue really quickly, because for obvious reasons, it's a main system, but like 40th Avenue South, it took us a while to get to, and some of those other mains. But we did a lot of mains this year that we have not done historically. But with what we did on First Avenue, we're gonna need to keep that moving along, 'cause that's, that's gonna need some work, and we're hoping to get another, you know, six or seven years out of that, with the seal coat we put on. And the last thing I'd like to talk about is our goal and objective, and it's not just about streets, it's multimodal transportation. We have 44 and a half miles of bike paths and sidewalks in Morehead. So we do have a task to execute our in-house bike repair plan, so we got $30,000 in with that. It didn't take all 30,000, I'm carrying over some into 2019, but I did a one mi, we did a one-mile portion on 20th Street that was sorely needed, that went from basically I-94 to 12th Avenue, where it stops. Then it hits concrete, and then the rest of that, above north of that, will be done as part of the underpass project. So that's what we did this year, and I shared with you asphalt milling overlay and bike paths, because we couldn't do those without the support of the wheelage tax. So thank you for your continued support. And of course, if there's any way we can get even more of that, I'd appreciate it. Of course, I gotta ask that, right?
Yeah.
Pay for what we have, but I want more.
Buy more cars.
Yeah, that's right, so.
You know, it, sometimes I, I hear a lot of criticism about that wheelage tax, you know, it's just another tax, it's kind of a quote, but I think it's important for people to see that, that it is going for some valuable projects countywide, and it's, it's good to see that you've capitalized on what you've been given to make the most of it. So we really appreciate the update, and the public will be able to see this, and hopefully they feel the same way as well.
All right, thank you. Thanks for your time, Steve.
Yep, any other questions?
Well, just to piggyback on that, one of the, one of the things that, you know, we've, I've heard complaints about the wheelage tax too, and I, you know, my comeback to them is, do you wanna drive on good roads or don't you? You know, and, 'cause we just don't have enough funding for, for the roads, and, and the only other option then, especially in, now at the county level, we don't special assess for projects. But, you know, by getting some of that wheelage tax to you, that helps the city then not have to do special assessments. It, it helps buy that down, or through your regular levy.
Oh, it would be. I mean, I would have to add it into my operations and maintenance budget, so absolutely.
That would be in your normal levy, so. So that does help offset that.
And it's always comparison, and I used this example last night at the council meeting, is I, I spent Thanksgiving in Michigan. And if you ever wanna go for a street appreciation visit, go to Michigan.
Or Missouri.
Holy cow. We can be pretty, granted, we're not perfect, we have a ton of work to do, but we're, we're working and making great progress, so thanks.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Moving into our item number three is the Highway Department items. Dave Overbaugh, our county engineer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We've got three items this morning. First item is, it's the annual grant approval for the Agassi Recreational Trail. Kinda getting a little better handle on what the annual costs are. Some different things have kind of evolved a little bit. We put a new deck on there. I shouldn't say we did, but the, the vehicle club up there offered to do the work, and through the grant, we paid for the materials. We also, we have one bridge right in north of Uland, so we're actually doing some bridge inspection work out there. Polk, Clay, and Norman are all kinda working together on that, so some little different things are running into the costs. Everything's, has been covered so far adequately, so I pretty much put together the same grant cost worksheet as I had in the past. And I believe last, last week, we did get the resolution signed, so I've got that paperwork signed from a week ago. If you just wanna approve the cost worksheet, I'll get that submitted. I think a couple more days, it's gotta be in by the 30th, so.
Questions?
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Gross, a second by Commissioner Wayland. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Recommend approval of the agreement with BNSF for the sidewalk and trail crossing in Glendon.
Yeah, there's a lot of documents that have come through with this, and I'll maybe let Eric explain a little bit. I'm hoping this is one of the last things that we need for the project through the railroad.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is in regards to our project in Glendon. As you're well aware, we do have to cross the tracks there, and as part of the project, we're proposing to put in a 10-foot shared-use path and a 5-foot sidewalk. And to do this work, BNSF just requires that we complete a trail license agreement with them, and basically it just gives us permission to go on their property to, to do the construction. We already have approved the easements and construction agreements with them earlier this year, so this is kinda that final piece. So I guess, yeah, we, we just recommend approval of the agreement, and then there's an insurance fee that, that we'll submit along with that as well.
Okay.
I'd move approval condition, but I, I'd like, if it hasn't been, I'd like our county attorney review.
Mr. Beatlesbacher is here. You're okay with that?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm, I'm fine with this being approved. I've reviewed it. When working with the railroad, as you know, it's essentially a contract of adhesion. The railroad controls, and if we wanna do the work, we meet the railroad's terms. That, all that, all that commentary aside, I'm fine with this being approved.
All right, so we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Recommend approval to lower the retainage on Cassad 9 paving project.
Yeah. This project's been completed.
Steve, can you seal it? Oh, there we go.
We did complete this project, and we did, we did have a few punch list items. There was some dirt in one of the culverts that was cleaned out a little bit last week, and we still have one driveway that they need to do a little work on, and the contractor is Zavro Construction. They are in agreement with us, but the temperatures and the timeframe isn't gonna work. So what we'd like to do is release, remove the retainage from 5% down to 1%. What is that dollar amount?
It's about 18,000.
About 18,000, more than enough to replace and to do this little bit of work, I guess, but it's kinda what we've done in the past on projects like this. We, we hate to carry 'em over if we have to. We feel it's necessary to make sure that they come back and clean up this driveway.
Correct.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Wayland.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Gross. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Thank you.
Just give you a little heads up, too, on the Glendon project. Eric's been working with the City of Glendon and the, our consultant, Altegg Engineers, on the plans. We did have to run them back through MINDOT. We did a few changes. There's a different staff member from MINDOT reviewing the federal aid portion of the plans. Should be done, I would say, within a week or two. So we're still on schedule for a, some, probably mid to late January, maybe early February at the latest, but anyway, an early spring letting, so that's kinda my hope there, to get a early letting and get good pricings.
Okay, all right. Thanks for the update. We appreciate it. Thank you. Item number four is the update on construction engineers guaranteed maximum price. Change orders number 17 and 18. Steve Larson, good morning.
Morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. As you mentioned, we have two change orders before you this morning. The first change order relates completely to the jail, or to the corrections facility. All of these, other than one issue, dealt with either building code inspection, a fire and martial inspection, or the Minnesota Department of Corrections inspection. And those requests were made prior to the opening of the corrections facility. The only addition is the acoustical panels. For those who have been through the facility, they, they did pre-plan a number of acoustical, acoustical panel, panels in different areas. When they got in there, there were a number of different areas that were extremely loud with the concrete and the cinder block walls, and so they're, they have asked for additional, additional acoustical panels to be placed in the different areas. The total, the total there that they're asking for in the revisions is 35,673. We certainly have, we do have, continue to have owner contingency and contractor contingency after this of roughly $511,000.
Correct.
Are there any, any questions of anything specific to any of these items?
On the, excuse me. On the acoustical panels, who requested them to be put in there?
That was a request from the, from Julie. That's the only one that was not, wasn't related to any of the inspections. But, but there's a variety of different areas that are closed off that are extremely loud.
If I, if I can comment on that, that, that happens to, that happened to be in some of the, the day rooms, or there also the...
Programming.
Programming rooms, and I happened to go in there that first night when we had all of our people there going through a, through the jail ministry, and it was unbearably loud in there. So these, the acoustics were really needed to help quiet that down, so. So I, I mean, Julie was right in her recommendation, I guess.
Wishes of the board?
I'd move approval of change order number 17.
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve change order 17, a second by Commissioner Wayland. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Now we have item number 18.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, order change order number 18, it pertains completely to the juvenile facility. As Commissioner Wayland and Campbell mentioned, they've had some challenges getting out of the ground over at the juvenile center. But start with the change order, we did have three credits totaling just under $11,000 in, in the change order 18. Much of the challenges that we had of the changes here came with the additions, both in the southeast and southwest corner. The most significant was on the southwest corner, where when they dug up the, the driveway going into our, into our Sally Port, they found an actual tunnel that was, that was still there. And so there was a lot of excavating and removal of dirt and, and additional dirt that needed to go into that area. That was roughly 33,000. One of the challenges they had also found is that the, the addition of the, of the Sally Port and the gym that was done back in 1996 actually sunk two inches from, from the base of the existing hospital or the building to, to the end, and so they had to make some adjustments in concrete and also in the, the piers that they needed to put in. And so we saw some changes there. In the southwest corner, we had a, a water, water main pipe that was not on anybody's pipe, anybody's drawings, that had to be excavated around, then supported and then permanently supported, and so those were some changes. We also had vibration monitoring when we put those piers in to make sure that we weren't disturbing our citizens and our employees and the buildings as they put those piers in. So those are the, most of the changes that, that took place, but if there's any specific questions on any of the others, I certainly can answer those.
Questions?
I believe, as you noted, that we do have two commissioners on that committee that were aware of that process.
Yes.
And I think reported on it at the prior commission meetings. It's something that we knew was gonna happen, and quite frankly, in a construction project, it should be assumed, actually.
Well, we're excited, we're, we're now, they're out of the ground everywhere, so hopefully those surprises will be minimal moving forward, so.
Correct. Yep, questions? Wishes of the board?
Okay, I would move approval of, of the number 18.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Wayland. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Madam Chair, in my committee reports, I will, I will give a little bit more update too on the contingencies in all of these projects.
Okay, thank you. Item number five is James O'Donnell. Good morning. He requests to fill a vacancy for a full-time juvenile counselor in the Non-Secure Program and a full-time overnight juvenile counselor in Non-Secure.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, the board. I'm here to request the permission to refill those positions. The positions are in our 2019 budget already. Our HR department ran the numbers for them. We'll be showing savings of $5,000 on one employee and $10,000 on the other in 2019.
Okay.
Move to approve.
We have, for, for first or second. We have a motion to approve both with, Commissioner Wayland makes the motion.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Savage, our recorder, is here to request a, filling a vacancy for a full-time deputy recorder. Good morning.
Good morning, Miss Scherzer. Thank you. I have a recent vacancy in our office for a full-time deputy recorder that I'm requesting that I can fill today. The savings on that was just under $8,000.
Madam Chair, move approval.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Campbell and a second by Commissioner Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to, the next item, hold it off until 9:15 or if Dwayne shows up before.
Yep, that's fine. We will then move into our committee reports. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you. Last Tuesday, after our board meeting, we had a personnel issues committee meeting. Our primary topic for that meeting was the market analysis study that we're looking at doing, and at this point, we've had, Darren has done some research into different potential people that we might look at hiring to do that, and, you know, we've went through that
quite a bit, went through those, and I think we've kind of narrowed down to a couple of them that'll be interesting tonight. I believe Darren, you're, you're going to come to us in early December with that recommendation?
I have a couple of phone calls out.
Okay. A few more things? Okay. Okay, so, so we're, we're on schedule. One of the, one of the things that we, that I suggested that we need to watch in our timeline for this, I know we had looked at doing the market study analysis in two thousand nineteen with any implementations needed to happen in two thousand twenty, and of course, any implementa, implementation like that has dollars tied to it. And, you know, so I suggested that we use the date of August first as our end date for that to be done so that we're aware of it, so we can incorporate anything that we need to do within our budget process. And so we're working backwards on that, so that would mean that the market study analysis would have to probably start in, what do we think, Commissioner Moser, was it January, February? Probably February timeframe in order to get done.
I think they'd asked for at least four to five months.
Right. So, so we've kind of gone back to them and, and I think we've asked Darren to make sure that, that they would be able to complete this, that task by August first, I think, is what we're looking at, right Darren? Okay. So that's kind of where we're at, and so hopefully Darren will have some good news for us in our next meeting. Oh, and then I did have, yesterday, we did have our two construction meetings, one with the juvenile center and the other with the LEC and the correctional facility. The juvenile center continues to move along. They were delayed a little bit, I think, I think our staff is getting a little, I think James is kind of anxious to get his gymnasium back, and I think what we were told now that maybe by next week.
Hopefully Friday.
Hopefully Friday that will be done. They were, they had hoped to have that, you know, the week of Thanksgiving, but it just didn't work out that way, so. So thank you to our staff for making do with, with what you have in that process. And I know that there was also some odor issues with some painting or something that came up that was kind of annoying, but I think they've got that resolved. I did want to touch on the contingencies on, on this project because that was, I think at last meeting I mentioned concern there in comparison with our other projects. And we did, we did deal with a couple of them today between, from, from what we've, what we've dealt with today in our change order, we would currently have about three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in total contingency still available with that project. That's what we've approved today. However, there are, there is about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars of additional items yet to be approved that have come up, that need to come under, under these conting, contingencies. And, you know, there's one, one of them was a really, really big one to the tune of ninety-seven thousand dollars. And so we're, we're waiting to get more details on that, and we'll report back. So with all that said and done, you know, we could be down into seeing our contingencies at about two hundred thousand dollars with still quite a bit of that project to go. One of the things on that that we have done, though, is we've, some of those dollars also has benefited the family service center in terms of like the new fire
Pump.
Fire pump and those types of things, so it actually, so if need be, we, we can go and look at some capital improvement dollars to replenish that or to pay that portion, so. And then there's some other things as well, and, and then we're looking at, James has also said that there might be some extra budget dollars that could be tied to this if need be, but it's just, right now, we're cautious about where we're at because that number's dwindled quite a bit, quite fast. Then on the jail and the LEC, obviously the LEC, we're down to, I think we had our last little item there that, so we're, that's probably about finished now. That had one. It had something to do with a switch that drew the water heaters that was recommended by the inspectors to change or something. Not a very big issue at all, but. Then on the, so the LEC will be done. I know Lori asked yesterday to, because phase one is about complete now with the punch lists and everything, so Lori has asked construction engineers to supply the list so that we can apply for our sales tax credit. If you recall, we were looking at that number to be about nine hundred thousand dollars that we would get reimbursed for the sales tax on the jail. I do have some questions on some other things that we've spent money on that we would, would not have done had it not been for that project, so I'm going to talk to Lori and see if we can include those to be qualified for those reimbursements.
Were we figuring that nine hundred thousand at the beginning to be?
Yes.
That we're not
That was built in as part of our budget process. But we're still in, we're still in really good shape on those projects, even with all the streets and everything we've done, we've. And then, of course, then we're, we also budgeted for, I think, one point eight million in sales tax, and we're collecting two point four, so that's more good news for us, so. Then I just wanted to point out the, Stephen had mentioned our contingency dollars, our contingency dollars right now, after the changes that we approved today, we are at, we are at two hundred and sixty-two thousand on owner contingency for the jail, and we are also at two hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in contractor contingency on the jail. So I think that's the number where you said five hundred and seven thousand?
Yep.
So that's on the jail itself. We also still have unused contingencies in the LEC of two hundred and ten thousand in owner contingency and a hundred and thirty-two thousand in contractor contingency. So, so we're still probably between those two projects, somewhere in that eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred thousand dollars contingency dollars that have not been used. So we're, so those projects, I feel much more comfortable with those. We still have phase two and that, you know, so we still have to come out of the ground, you know, so that's, that's where most of our contingencies end up being used up, so.
All right. Thank you.
Do you want me to talk more?
Happy Thanksgiving. Commissioner Haney?
I didn't have anything.
Commissioner, Commissioner Wayland?
I just had the jail and detention center meetings yesterday also. I think Kevin did a better job of explaining that, so I won't expound on that. The demolition is going well, too, you can see, so it's, looks different over there, wide open spaces.
Absolutely. Thank you. Last week, I also attended the PIC committee. That was well covered. We did also discuss a little bit in, besides the analysis, the wage analysis, the sheriff's transition in terms of connecting with the sheriff-elect and advertising for any positions that needed to be advertised. So Steve was going to touch base with the sheriff-elect on that. I also had an opportunity to meet with the mayor-elect of Morehead, Jonathan Judd. He's excited to continue the collaboration on different partnerships that the city and county have together and is looking forward to working with all of us, so we want to need to relay that message to you. Yesterday, I attended a meeting in regards to the detoxification grant that we're applying for the state of Minnesota Department of Health Human Services. We met with Klein McCarthy on the schematics and the drawings and space needs. We've pretty much nailed down what would be best case for our needs, and they were going to finalize that. The thought was that we give that to construction engineers, they provide us with an estimate. We would bring that back to this board, all to be done by the December, early December deadline to have that application. And just as you recall, we are paying for design fees on that, and if we get the grant, fantastic. It's a five million dollar grant, so I think it's, it's worth a shot getting it. But if we don't, in the near future, I assume that we will be needing to look at expanding, expanding that detox unit, so I think it's staff time and county resources spent worthwhile, and hopefully we can hear positively on that because that's a large grant. We'll keep you updated as, as we hear further on that. Steve, do you want to give?
Just a few quick meetings. I was at the PIC meeting, which was covered in detail yesterday. I participated, new employee orientation for our new employees here at Clay County. The grant meeting that you just discussed, I also participated in that. I think December eleventh is the day we hope to, to come back to the board with the, with the final, final package. And I participated in the, the LEC and corrections facility owners meeting that was discussed in detail. I did have a conversation with Ben Mattson from Construction Engineers on the LEC. They're looking to start paying out some of the retainage to some of the contractors here in the next couple of weeks as we close, get close to closing down that project. And so, otherwise, that would, that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Gross has indicated that the parties are here, so I think you get the award for recruiting this week because you recruited some people to attend the meetings. Congratulations. The Wild Rice Watershed District Board concerns, so Commissioner Gross and Dwayne Erickson, who's the board, on the board of managers. Good morning. If you'd like to come up, Dwayne?
At the last meeting, the Wild Rice Watershed Board, Dwayne, had indicated he probably wanted to resign and stuff like that, and asked for the discussion with him on that, and just have a chair there, okay? And he asked that he hold it up a little bit, and he asked if he wanted to become part of the board and explain some of the dealings with the Wild Rice Watershed Board as our representative, so try to give him an opportunity to speak to us.
Okay. First, Dwayne, I want to thank you for your service to the watershed. Serving on a watershed is often a thankless job, and we do have several representatives that serve on the Wild Rice as, as well as the Buffalo Red, and so thank you for your time and commitment to that. We appreciate it.
I appreciate you having a confidence in me, so.
All right.
I don't know, Dwayne, you can just go ahead and explain what your, what your feelings are with the Wild Rice Watershed Board, whether you want to continue on as the representative or not, you know. I did not submit your, your letter, so as of right now, you're still on the board, and if you want to continue on the board, that's fine with us, too. We still have full confidence in you, so.
Do you have any questions?
Well, I guess the first question I would have is, you know, what, what are your concerns? You must have some concerns about the Wild Rice Watershed Board, so tell us what your concerns are.
Well, my frustration is after nine years being on the board, it seems like, you know, we're still thinking and studying and looking at things and have, getting projects on the ground has been very limited. And maybe the ice, the tip, the tipping point was, you know, the remodeling project and, and spending four hundred and forty thousand to remodel an old building was, I found upsetting, but it passed four to three. Three of us, no. Four of us, yes. And I can respect that board decision, but I thought, and, and, and one of the things in the packet is, I've got a mission statement to Wild Rice Watershed. I didn't have a mission statement. This is from the Buffalo, and I, I've known Bruce Albright basically all his working life because we farm in that watershed, too, but the mission of the Buffalo Watershed District is to alleviate flooding and to manage water resources of the district in a manner that best protects the valuable resource. So in the tax dollars that come in, I would like to see projects that, that do these things that the mission statement says. You know, not, we don't need a big fancy building or more study and or bigger, more loaded agencies. We want to take care of the landowners and the people that live there. So that, that was the tipping point, kind of. And, and as I, yesterday, I went to an advisory committee meeting, and I've got the statutes. That's one of the things that's on the statutes and what the advisory committee should consist of. And here, I'll read the purpose, it's to advise and assist the managers on all matters affecting the interests of the watershed district and make recommendations to the managers on all kind of project and improvements in a watershed district. You know, so I would have liked, you know, I feel myself as more of a messenger, letting people know what's going on, and the more input I get back from what the landowners, the people that live there and make a living and have to pay taxes do, the more input I get, the better I like it. So that's, you know, I'm just sharing some of my frustrations, and I think maybe we got that addressed yesterday. And it's coming from the advisory committee, meaning they were frustrated because they didn't know about things till after the fact, so why have an advisory committee to tell them what, what went on? We need an advisory committee to tell them what should we do or ask the questions and what should we do.
Dwayne, who is the Clay County representative on the advisory committee? Is there an additional member? And the reason I ask is the Buffalo Red has an advisory committee of elected officials, and I'm, I'm on that advisory committee, so.
Robert Rossett, and Robert Rossett's here.
Okay, great.
And he was there yesterday.
Okay, good.
And I'm guessing these guys are here to tell me not to quit, or unless they, they got somebody with them, but, and I'm not a quitter, so.
No, and I did get a phone call about someone that just said that you've been a great member that understands where landowners are coming from, advocate for landowners, and so they appreciate the commitment that you, you've shown on the board. But it, also with that, I think it's important that, that you do share your frustrations because oftentimes, you know, it's, we're not going to tell the water, the managers how to vote on something, but we want to be on the same page with you and understand where you're at and help to guide decision-making that's best for the watershed.
I want you informed.
Commissioner Campbell?
I'm going to, I want to address your frustration first on the four hundred and some thousand dollars for your facility that maybe you're thinking, you know, could have been used in other ways. We just spent over thirty million dollars on a jail. I would have soon not spent a nickel, but, but it was needed, and it still needs to be done. And, you know, just like the Buffalo Red, they went through and, and did a new building.
Right.
So now maybe would that have been a better choice for you? I don't know. I wasn't into the details of it, but sometimes we win on some of those things and sometimes we don't.
Right.
Right? So.
I accept that.
Yeah, but, but the, the, the issue in terms of getting things done, you know, and whether it's for the landowners and for the, you know, protecting resources, that's, that's, that is what you should be doing.
Right.
And all of those things have controversy tied to them as well.
They do.
So, so it makes your job difficult, but from my experience with you, from when we first appointed you, I think you've done a good job. I would encourage you to not let some of these things sway you to leave. I, I think you bring too much to the table still, and I, I would hope that Frank can tear up, if there's a letter here, I hope you can just rip that thing up and you can just keep trying to do your best to make that watershed a, a good watershed. That's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm gonna do.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we've got two representatives on the Watershed Board representing Clay County, and when you say it was a forty-three vote, one of our representatives voted for it and one against, so. So should we say we're against it or for it? You know, I don't know if you're looking for that answer or not, but I'm going to let the Watershed Board make up their mind concerning that, you know, so. Like Commissioner Campbell was said, you know, some you win, some you lose, you know. I do also encourage you to stay on, you know, but that's going to be up to you. I mean, some people want you off. I've never, I've received, I don't know, five, six calls, I guess, encouraging you to stay on.
Okay.
I encourage you to stay on. If you've got some reason you still want to, I'll submit it, but you let me know what you want done.
Well, I appreciate that, okay? I'm not a quitter.
No, I get that.
You know, so, yes, I'm going to stay on. I'll finish what I started to do. I've got two more years or is, in April of twenty-one? Can't do the math, I'm not sure if I got that right, but, but I'm going to put emphasis on what the watershed, you know, I have got such good things to say about the Buffalo But I'm going to put emphasis on what the watershed, you know, I have got such good things to say about the Buffalo and Bruce Albright and not being a member of the Red Board. And what they still do in projects, on-the-ground projects, and I talked to Bruce yesterday morning, I touched base with him, he's my sounding board too.
Sure.
And, but they're doing $18 million in grant money and projects and SWCDs put these projects pretty much on the ground and they're doing a good job. And they would have contributed, he said, approximately $2 million into the Red Board. You know, this is one of my other frustrations, is the Red Board a good group to be a member of? And I'd let, I'd let the landowners make that call. Some, again, this is a controversial one.
It is.
But what, what the Buffalo is doing, not being in a Red Board and now the Sandhill quit joining from the Red Board, this is my other concern about spending the $440,000 for a remodel. What happens if more drop out of the Red Board and then we're going to have this gigantic office? So I shouldn't go there, but I mean, you know, that, you already knew that was, that's a lot of my frustration.
And I think that's from the meetings that I've been at the Buffalo Red, that Buffalo or the Red Board versus not continues to be a debate even now. I mean, it really is. There are some members that really encourage that we get back in that and there's some members that say no. And I think it's, it's hard to justify it if you're going to spend X amount of dollars and all of that's going up north by Canada into bigger projects. It's hard to justify our local dollars going to that. On the flip side, if that work gets done up there and it shifts down towards our part of the valley, then I think it's, it's easier to rationalize it, you know, their money's coming here. But I get it, I completely understand that.
And I know you do.
But I think the other thing that I want to point out is on all boards, there are disagreements. We've disagreed at this table fiercely about other things and we still have disagreements about things. But I want to think that those disagreements help mold whatever direction you, you go. And so if there's a member of this board that votes against something, I think part of their concern still gets wrapped up into the end project. And so you may have concerns with spending money on the new remodel, but I, I hope because you're choosing to be part of this, that you could be a fierce advocate for the fiscal conservative piece of you going into that project. And so, you know, I think you don't, you don't win it all in the majority, but I think through your calm demeanor and leadership and.
Well, I vote no a lot and I don't think I'm a negative person, okay?
And that's, you know, I don't think that the vote no is that bad, but I think it's, if you justify the reason that you're voting no, it helps people to understand where you're at, is what I'm trying to say.
I try hard to explain that, I really do. And I guess, I don't know what feedback I've got from the group, but.
You know, and too, if there's any members of you that are wanting to speak, feel free to.
I can, Madam Chair, follow up on your comments. You know, I think, you know, at this board, we see an awful lot of things in a lot of different areas, whether it deal with social services or public health or law enforcement, highways, water issues. They all, they all can come with their own set of controversies and we can all have our own opinions. But in the end of the day, what I can tell you about, about this board is we probably 98% of the time are unanimous in our decisions.
That's very impressive.
And, but, but we, but we do that because we, we understand that we can't always get our way, but we need to try to do what's best for the group as a whole. And so that, so sometimes we, you know, like if I would have been in your position on not wanting that thing, well, if I'm seeing that I'm not going to get my way on it, what can I do to make it at least more comfortable for when it goes through? You know, so, you know, so when it comes to the FM diversion, we've had some disagreements on this board about the FM diversion. You know, but I think, you know, over time, you know, that, you know, there's been some consolations that have happened that are making it, you know, getting closer to being comfortable and doing it.
We paid our real estate tax just a few days ago and I just, it didn't take long to get next year's bill in the mail, which, which 31 bucks an acre is what it cost me for land in Clay County on my tax statements. And I leave it with $3 an acre to the Wild Rice Watershed District. You know, so I got a feel for these costs, you know, this, these are taxes and I'm not complaining, but this is more than I paid for cash rent when I started farming and I'm getting to be an old guy. I will continue with your support. I appreciate your time and I don't want to waste your time. I needed to share this and I, and let's go get done the best we can.
There you go.
Was there anyone that wanted to speak? Feel free if you want. Yes, you can stand up to the microphone so we can hear you, sir, thank you.
I just want to say personally, I know some of these other guys, they come on these lines too, really appreciate Dwayne and his dedication. And ever since this project 42 got started in the Wild Rice District a few years back, raised a lot of controversy. And the problem with that was, not that it was a terribly bad project, extremely expensive, a lot of it was bad, we thought. The initial stages of that project just was like there was no communication. And so it got too far along before everybody got the notice and the maps were on the wall and this is what we want to do. Well, appreciate Dwayne as always on top of it, keeping us informed on, you know, what's coming and we appreciate that rather than having something slip in on us that raises all this controversy. So just want to say thank you to Dwayne and appreciate what he's doing so.
Yeah, thank you for being.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Frank.
Dwayne, I'd like to return this letter to you. Read it now. Read it whatever you want.
You should read the bottom, it shows how much money the watershed takes in an annual basis.
All right, thank you.
Consider, I'm on.
Very good, thank you, Dwayne.
Appreciate you putting up with me. Thanks. Thanks, guys.
Is there anything else? We are adjourned, thank you.